Okay, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:02. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You'll notice that the board members are not wearing masks tonight. We feel that we're six feet apart and it's difficult for people to hear us when we have masks on. You folks, when you come up to the mic, it's optional if you want to wear a mask or not. It's up to you. We will begin with Board Member Updates, Budget Committee, Ginny.
We look forward to next Tuesday's meeting. Dr. Koster and Mariah will be visiting us and presenting the school budget recap and what's going on looking forward to next year.
Wellness, Andrea?
Nothing at this time.
Is your mic on?
Nothing at this time.
School Boards Association, I don't have anything. Scheduling, Frank?
We met on September 8th and we were reviewing the goals for the coming calendar year. There's another meeting scheduled, I believe, on the 20th. I guess to complete the assessment of those goals and which direction the administration is going to go forward on.
Okay.
Any comments?
That was really Steering, right? Steering Committee? It's fine.
Oh, that was the Steering Committee.
You're fine.
That's okay. Learning Collaborative, Frank, anything?
No.
Rec Department, Andrea?
Just that there are openings for the after-school program, which this current six-week session is Flag Football and I believe Monday, Wednesday, Monday or Wednesdays is for the Center School students and Tuesday and Thursday is for the Marston School students. So if you would like to sign your child up for those programs, it sounds like it's going to be really fun. And they are working on Halloween programming with the PTA and other members of the community. And I think that is it.
Policies, Wendy, Andrea?
We've met and we've got policies to look at tonight. Did you want to add anything?
No, we'll just be, a couple of them are second reads, so we'll be making decision and then a couple of first reads, so we may have to discuss those further.
Okay. Negotiations, Frank?
We have not met yet. I believe we're setting a schedule for tomorrow.
Yep. And CESP A next Wednesday morning.
I just want to make sure.
Tomorrow is at 4?
Yep.
That's not CESP A?
See yous tomorrow. CESP A's next Wednesday at 7:00 AM.
7:00 AM, okay. We'll be there, won't we, Frank?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
PTA, Wendy?
I have a whole list. Number one is if you are interested in a membership, you can go to HamptonNHPTA.com. You can sign up online. Additionally, the envelopes are going to go out soon if they haven't already with the forms and the information on how to pay your membership. First meeting of the year is next Tuesday, the 21st, at 7:00 PM here in the cafeteria. What else? They are having a mom's sale. That's a fundraiser for the PTA. Orders for that are due by Thursday, September 16th. If you have any questions about that, you can take a look at their Facebook page. And last but not least, a big thank you to the PTA for hosting our back-to-school presentation that gave parents the opportunity to come in and hear all the details about the back-to-school plan, ask questions directly of the principals and Ms., sorry, excuse me, Dr. Costa and Mrs. Brandt. So that was very successful.
And the really cool thing about the mom's sale is you can buy moms and if you don't think you have time to get them, they'll deliver it for a cheap fee at $15.
Correct.
Really, you can decorate and save money and buy your plants and have them delivered.
Absolutely. That's it.
Curriculum, Andrea, Wendy?
Curriculum?
Did I already do that?
No.
No.
I was looking for professional development, but that's all right. So I know that the staff in each school have been doing a lot with the testing to kind of assess where all the students are at and the upcoming early release, I mean, release day, I believe they will be getting together and looking at all the scores and analyzing and trying to, you know, make sure we get kids where they need to be and bump them up. We're also working with Mike Anderson and he's going to be working with different groups of teachers for socio-emotional learning and incorporating that into a lot of the areas, curriculum areas. That's about it.
Ginny, I didn't mean to skip over you. Professional Development?
We haven't met yet.
Okay. All right. And the Town Master Plan, Frank?
Regarding the Town Master Plan, there will be a master plan community forum to be held here at Hampton Academy at the gym between 6:00 and 7:00 PM on September 29th for all those interested parties that would like to attend. Question?
Yes, Frank.
Is this being televised? Because I just got a text from somebody saying we're not on air.
It's nothing there.
On channel 13 and it's streaming live on YouTube.
I'm sorry?
On channel 13 and streaming live on YouTube.
Okay, so it's not on 22? No, just channel 13. Okay, thank you.
And we will have public comment if there is any right now. I'm wanting to hear from up back. Is there anybody, has anybody called in? Well, I'll take that as a no. Okay, we'll continue. We'll start with Mr. Lannan to introduce new staff.
Mrs. Haywood and I are proud to introduce to you tonight seven staff members. I'll say the names and their positions and they'll stand up and wave to you. So we'll start off in Grade 2 Hannah Fennaburk. Grade 2 Kelly Knowles. Grade 2 Emily Panopoulos. Kindergarten, we have Julie Elwood. In preschool, we have Megan Cogo. Special Education Case Manager is Joanne Hernan. And lastly, our school psychologist is Michaela Kylie. I am proud to announce and Jamie and I are proud to announce they're all off to a fabulous start. What a great, great addition to Center School. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
So we have three new faces at Marston. Starting in 5th grade, we have Ms. Nicole Stephen. We also have Ms. Jessica Pennington. And our new school counselor is Ms. Emily Whitney. Welcome them and just like Tim, you know, it's been a great start to the year and they're fitting in very nicely. So if you ever come by to visit or you see them out in the community, make sure everybody says hello and welcomes our new faces. Thank you.
And Mr. O'Connor?
Sadler is much taller than I am. Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce four new staff members at Hampton Academy. I'll start with in the Special Education Department, Sarah Grody. Joining Sarah is Cara Dumont. She is in 6th grade Social Studies on the 6th grade team. Our third addition is Amanda Tomorelli. Amanda is our new Guidance Counselor and we'll talk about each one of them a little bit in a minute, but been great to have her here. She started late, but she got here. Our last, our last new staff member is Felicia Formasano. Unfortunately, Felicia could not be here this evening, but all four of these individuals have transitioned nicely to our school and we're just so glad to have them with us. Thank you.
We have one district staff member, a physical therapist named Casey DePalma, and she's not here this evening, but I just wanted to make sure that her name got in the record. Physical therapist.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have two new staff members in our department. Nick Giaruso, who's in the back room there running all the equipment. And I have Tim Smith, who is not able to make it tonight, is our new data specialist.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think we will begin with the Principals' Report. Mr. Lannan? Almost got away.
You've all had a chance to take a look at my report. Just a couple of things I want to highlight. First of all, we have our open house that's coming up quite next week on the 21st. It's a virtual event. Notice went out to all of the folks, all the parents, and then individual invites will go out per the classroom. It started already. We have staggered the times between 5:00 and 7:00 to allow for folks to join virtually if they have multiple children in multiple grades. And we've coordinated also with the other two schools to ensure there is not any overlap on that. Also, another thing that's coming up is school pitches on the 21st. So if you haven't had a chance to sign up for our school pitches, please make sure you do that. And of course, the 22nd, we have a full day in service and we have plans in place for a full day in service. Any questions for us at Center School? Yes?
I noticed in your report you have a large tent for outside learning.
Correct.
Is that up yet?
That is up and running and it's being utilized at all the recesses, especially to take a break from the sun. And then we have a sign up and a Google sign up for teachers that can sign up to utilize it. Related services have been right off the bat using it, as well as some classroom teachers right off the bat. So it's been a great addition to Center School. Thank you for supporting that.
And how long will that run till?
I don't have, I, how long is it going to be open, the tent?
Right.
I believe we have the tent scheduled for the fall until the snow flies at some point or maybe the wintertime.
October 31st.
October 31st.
Yep.
And then again, we'll get it back in the springtime, I believe. So not during the cold weather. We don't think it would be safe to have it outside during the cold weather and snow.
I guess, will you be utilizing heaters if you needed them in October, late October?
We hadn't planned for that, so we, that's why we're keeping them for October 31st. We're monitoring them to see how it's going. It was, it's kind of a pilot and we want to see how often the students are using it. So we'll, we'll know more between now and October 31st. But that would be something I would have to talk with Mr. LaSard about because obviously there are some requirements around using these tents and safety. Right.
Yep, but it's been a great addition. Absolutely.
Where is that located, Tim?
It's directly behind the gym.
Okay.
Behind the gym, there's a hot-topped area and then directly behind that, we have the tent in place so it's not to interfere with the rec sports outside with the soccer area. Adjacent to the, the equipment that's outside. It's a great location for it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tim? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Sadler?
So just a, I know you saw my report, a couple of things to highlight for families. School pitcher day is also September 21st at Marston, so that might make it easier for parents. We'll see what happens. But that'll take place in the morning and you should have received a flyer through our Friday email system that has instructions for ordering pitchers online. And if there's a problem ordering online, just contact the main office and we'll help you out with that. The other thing to be on the lookout for, both from the school and then individual teachers or grade levels, is our Curriculum Night will be held on Tuesday, September 28th. And as Mr. Lannan is doing similar, it will be virtual, but teachers will be live so they can be the presentation of what we're teaching and what kids will learn this year, but also a chance for parents to ask some questions about the curriculum instruction and assessment at our school. So that will take place and you will again get invitations from teachers. It will be staggered, so if you have a 3rd and a 5th grader, you'll be able to attend both sessions without any overlap. Any questions?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. And Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening again. It was a great start of the school year. I love the transition. They start off, the first week is three days, the second is four days. So this is really our first full week of school. So this is when the honeymoon is kind of over where we've, we're ready to get to work. And quite honestly, the procedures that we've, we've used here, I think they're working very well. I'm sure you have questions. Mr. Doherty is here. If you have questions specifically, if you saw the report, there are more than 100 and something students went out for athletics and so we're running a full slate. In fact, there was a volleyball game just ended against Seabrook just a few minutes before the meeting started. We also have a Curriculum Night. It's ours is on the 23rd. It will be virtual and we found we engaged a lot more parents virtually. They were able to attend the meetings, whether those were parent conferences or the Curriculum Night like we did last year. We'll follow the same, same type of procedure on the 23rd. Administration will do a presentation first and then the teams will be spread out a half hour apart. So basically from 3:30 till about 6:00, we'll be working. Any questions for me?
Should we do the athletics now?
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So an athletics update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Athletics have been running for the past couple of weeks. We have them started really successfully. As Mr. O'Connor said, we have over 100 student athletes in five sports running. We worked with Mrs. Brand to put in safety protocol, you know, to make sure that we're, we're safe during COVID and things have been going well so far. We kicked off the season with volleyball today. We had time trials for cross country and we had the other three, three teams practicing. So we had 100 kids going today after school. We're distancing them and staggering their times, getting changed, and they're all spread out from Tuck Field to the backfield here. And so it's going really well.
So a quick question?
Sure.
Well, let's just take volleyball for example.
Sure.
Spectators allowed?
With masks.
They have to have masks?
With masks. What we're doing is we're communicating AD to AD before matches, communicating exactly what our building's requiring for the match, you know, negotiating times and things like that. Things are really short on the Seacoast. We're short on officials. Busing is critical, so it's just kind of a match-to-match thing.
Okay, athletes wearing masks?
Athletes are wearing masks indoors. Outdoors for competition, they don't, but when they're on the sidelines, our athletes do.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, Frank?
I know you mentioned volleyball and cross country.
Yeah.
What about soccer and field hockey?
Going well, yeah. We have full rosters. Soccer is over at Tuck Field, girls and boys. So they're away from the school and field hockey's right out back. Yep.
I'd like to just make one comment.
Sure.
I want to congratulate you on getting this program up and running. I know these kids over the past year or so have been kind of confined, not playing sports with, which is normal for a child growing up. So I want to commend you on running a great program and moving forward. Hopefully, we can continue this throughout the school year.
I really appreciate that. I'll also congratulate our administration for, for great support. Our coaches who have been amazing, flexible, staying late, meeting, and our janitorial staff for setting everything up for us. So it's been a team effort, truly.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Lois DK?
Alrighty, good evening. I know you have my report and just a couple of things to note. You might notice the numbers on the out of district went from eight down to five, so that's a big jump. And I just wanted to remind you that that is how we funded the partner program. So it was all planned that way and it's, it's playing out just as we planned. Referrals, we have eight referrals already this, this right season and we will just keep doing what we're doing best, which is serving our kids. But the other really exciting thing is the program approval. So when students are placed in special ed, this is called a leash restrictive environment, so they, we have specific programs that they go into and all of these programs have to be in the computerized system. So if a child is educated for more than 60% of their day in a specific program, you have to go to the state and get approval. You have to fill out an application and give them a whole bunch of stuff. And I did all that this summer and we got approval for our ELP program and the partner classroom. So the case managers now have a bucket, if you will, to place those kids. And then when they're not in there 60% of the time, they have a different placement. So that's really exciting. It's exciting for everybody, the kids and the staff. And the other thing is the Seacoast CARES team, we've been, work, I've been working with them. It's SAU 21 and 90 collaboration and we are really on the cutting edge in, in the state for a behavior intervention team. We're working very closely with Exeter and the Safety and Security Task Force, as well as Homeland Security, is really pushing these behavior intervention teams. And we have one, so it's really exciting. We're working to increase that to have a pre-K5 team this year. So we now have the Center SRO and our social worker is working with me and the SAU 21. We have a training coming up on Thursday where they're flying in a trainer and we're heading over to Exeter to get some training. So just wanted to let people know that that's happening. And on our website, we do have an anonymous tip line. It's a see something, say something tip line and it's connected to the, the CARES team. And the, the purpose of the CARES team is to prevent self-harm and harm to others. So that's what it's all about. Just wanted to keep people informed.
Ginny, question?
Who applied for the Haas Foundation grant?
The, what, what grant?
The one that Marston School got for $5,000 only to be used for special ed.
So that was an anonymous donor and we're just very grateful to have it.
Okay, you didn't have to apply, right Nathan?
Yeah, no, there was no application. That was an anonymous gift, yep.
Right now, we only have seven children, five special needs and two community in each preschool class. Are you anticipating more? Is that why our numbers are so low or what's going on? Because he's 28 in these four classes.
Well, the numbers aren't not that low in the preschool. I'm looking at Tim, I'm thinking like, you're going by this 21 and dividing it by four? Is that what you're saying?
I'm going by 21 plus eight is 29.
And the friendship kids.
Divided by four is seven.
Which is, which is, which is a typical start to our school year, but as they turn three, it's a rolling admission. So we always anticipate the enrollment to always continue to go. Absolutely, we anticipate more coming in.
Okay.
But we have a maximum of 10 per session anyway, so we're getting close to it. So we're a little.
10 regular or 10?
10 special ed students in a class.
And two community, so that would be 12?
Yeah, that's what we have always capped as a distance.
Okay.
So I don't, so we're right in the ballpark where we, we should be. I'm not, those, those numbers aren't really different than what they've been in the past, so.
It's just small compared to other classes, Tim. That's why I was asking.
Oh, correct. But if, I think if we can do some research, maybe we can get it to you later next month about the past few, five, four, five years about starting October, preschool numbers and ending numbers. That may be helpful for you, okay?
Very much.
Awesome.
Perfect.
Any other questions, Frank?
Can you elaborate on the speech and learning segment as it pertains to Hampton Academy? I know it's pertinent to Marston. I know it's pertinent to Center, but I didn't think we needed a speech and learning pathologist in, at the academy.
So, speech and language pathologists, is that what? Service, service delivery of?
Because that's contractual, correct?
So it depends on the child and yes, there are students who receive speech and language services at the academy. It's a different level of service. It's more push-in to the classroom and a few pull-outs, but there are less kids that receive the service, but I'm not sure what you want me to say about it.
How many kids receive the service at Hampton?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. I, I can, I think we've, I can bring them.
Frank, could you move up to the mic a little?
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I was just inquiring because that was a significant jump in the, I'm looking at what you provided and that was a significant jump. Almost 18,000 for this coming year. 18,000 for this coming year.
So we use a contracted service at the academy and we have our own speech-language pathologists on staff.
Correct.
That may make a difference in the funding.
All right, I'd like to have that number. How many we service at the academy?
How many kids are, I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's on there.
Well, it's a wide range.
The number of children that are serviced.
25 to 40. It's not an indicative number, though.
Okay. I can certainly get you the caseload of the specific children who are being serviced.
No, no, just the number.
The number of kids being serviced at Hampton Academy receiving speech and language services.
By grade.
By grade. Okay?
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
We'll be speaking with you later on.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Limperas, Technology?
Well, good evening and this is, this will be my last board report. I am going to be moving on to Lowell Public Schools, so as their new director of technology, so.
So I guess my question is, is should the board accept your resignation now or when you finish your report?
That's up to you. I submitted that. I hope you would accept it.
All right, we'll do it when you finish your report.
Thank you. You have my report in front of you. It encompasses everything we've done this summer and we are in a great place to be ready for the school year. The only things that aren't completed are things that we are still waiting to receive, which are access points. As you know, there's, or may not know, there's a chip shortage and that impacts a whole lot of technology, including in your cars and including things in the school. So we were lucky to get all of our Chromebooks in at time. We had put those in way in advance in anticipation of this, but the access points are slated to be here soon, real soon. They told me the end of this month, end of, the middle of September, really, probably, I'm thinking maybe the end. And you have your Promethean boards, which last I heard was still slated to be here mid-October. So the only thing we'll have to figure out, or you'll have to figure out as a district if you accept my resignation, is when we hang those kinds of things because they do require some disruption to class. So we usually like to get that stuff done in the summer so that we are not in the middle of teaching. So it may mean having to have my, people on my team coming before after school or doing it, waiting to do it till a vacation unless we all come to agreement that it's important enough to get them up sooner than later and kind of deal with the noise and distraction of people in the room. But that's something to be figured out later when it shows up.
Any questions for Mr. Limperas? No? Okay.
I move that we accept Mr. Limperas's resignation with regret.
Seconded, Wendy. Discussion, Frank?
Sure.
Yeah, can we hold off on that? Because I want to discuss something in non-public, that's all.
Okay.
I mean, nothing, you.
No, that's fine.
It's just timing. Timing is what I want to bring up.
Okay.
Great, that's fine.
Well, we, we have a motion in the second to accept his resignation. You don't want to accept it now?
No.
Okay, then I'll go back to the person who made the motion.
Sure, I mean, I will hold off. I mean, hey, if we don't accept the resignation, I have a feeling he's still going to go, but.
No, 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 no. On the contrary, on the contrary, that was not my intention.
No, I know. I, I will defer until after non-public.
Frank, if you could speak into the mic, people are not able to hear you.
Just tilt the mic up, Frank, it'll help.
Wendy, I guess you'll withdraw your second.
I will withdraw my second.
If Ginny has drawn her motion. Okay. We will defer the acceptance of your resignation to a later time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for me in regards to the board report?
But I want to say in public, I think you've done a tremendous job for this SAU. An absolutely phenomenal job over the last seven years. And I think a round of applause would be in order.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. But I've never been one to take the credit all myself. It's been a true team effort by everyone here, including a school board that fully has supported everything I've done. So I appreciate that. And thank you very much. And staff and administration that has had a belief and a vision that has allowed us to move forward. And it was an exciting trip. So I appreciate it, and thank you.
And Greg, I appreciate your inordinate amount of patience to deal with us non-computer literate people. Thank you and your staff.
Thank you.
And can you provide a number for those people so they can reach out to you for help?
I always have. They have it in my signature line. You can still call it. I don't guarantee I'll answer because I'm going to the third biggest school district in the state of Massachusetts. So I anticipate being busy, but I'd be more than happy to help if I can.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes, I would also like to just echo your sentiments on behalf of the leadership team. We'll have more of an opportunity tomorrow during our meeting, but definitely wanted to do that publicly to thank you for being such a leader in technology and keeping Hampton at the cutting edge of what's been happening. I think that because of you and your department's efforts, we were well positioned to take on the challenges we faced last year with remote learning and hybrid learning. So I thank you for always putting the students first and really keeping us on the cutting edge. And so a great big thank you. I know the community probably can't thank you enough. And it was because of you that we did have such success last year. So a big, big thank you.
Thank you. It truly has been a pleasure to be here. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Mary, anything?
Hi, everyone. I know we're always asked about the free reduced meals application. I have a stack on my desk, and I have some coming in every day. So I'll process, I am in the processing them, and I should have a number by next month. And I am still in need of two food service workers, if anyone's interested, three and four-hour position. That's it.
Any questions for Mary?
I'm going strong feeding the kids.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have the superintendent's report. And I believe, oh, did we need to accept some donations or did that in your report?
Are there donations that were attached to your reports?
I think Mr. Sadler had some.
Just the $5,000.
The $5,000, yep.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to accept that? Jenny?
Yeah, Frank's given.
Frank, and seconded?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
That's the only one. Absolutely. So as you know, we traditionally, or we have last year, we are this year, looking at a memorandum of agreement that we have worked on. I know that Les, Mariah, Frank, we sat around the table with CE and CESP. We did that collaboratively to come up with a memorandum of agreement that isn't before you. This just ensures that we are taking all the precautions to have a safe learning environment and looking at working conditions. So I think that it was, it's what we expected it to look like. I think this agreement is definitely more flexible, and it represents the changing, fluctuating conditions that are happening with what's going on with COVID-19. So.
So any questions on that? I know Andrew and Amy are here. Did you have anything you needed to say? Or wanted to say, share, talk about?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Frank.
I know on Sunday, you sent the final version, correct? I mean, I have it. Have there been any changes? Because I haven't had a chance to review the final version yet because I got it late Sunday. And I've been busy on other things. So has there been any changes? Has anybody looked at it? I mean, I'm all, any changes from what we discussed other than language?
You should, you should come up to the mic so people can hear you, in case there are questions. Thank you, Andrew. For those who don't know, this is Andrew Wallace. He's president of the Teachers Association in SAU 90 and SAU 21. Welcome.
Thank you, Les. Appreciate it. Frank, you had a question, sorry. Did you have a question, Frank?
Yes. The question I had was, on Sunday, you sent the final version.
Yes.
Okay, to the board.
Yep.
All right. And my question was, and I haven't had a chance to review it because I've been away. So my question is, has there been any changes, language-wise or otherwise, in that final version that you submitted from what we discussed and made changes to during our negotiations?
The last change was sent about two weeks ago. And it was a clarification on what instruction would look like if students are out for prolonged absences due to medical conditions. But since that time, there have not been any changes, no.
Okay.
And Andrew, I have a question. So protocol for this, it's calling for four signatures on this one. I'm guessing you have another one in SAU 21, a little different.
That's correct, yep.
Whose, whose copy are we using for those signatures? I mean, I have one here, but-
I think we'll probably send you, so, good question. I think we'll probably send you a clean copy to sign, but you can sign that one. It won't, it won't change. I don't know what, how many signature lines are there on that one?
Four. There's one for Dr. Costa, you, me, and Linda Libby from CESP.
Think that, did anybody else sign it last time?
I don't think so.
I think we've used your document exclusively for SAU 90, so I don't think that they've been used for 20, 21 at all. They have a different, a different architecture in the SAU over there.
Well, I'm going to assume it's this one, and I'm going to sign it.
Sounds good.
If I knew the date.
Today would be-
It's the 14th, 14th.
September.
Should we vote on it?
I know. Do we need to vote?
Give it to you, Lois.
We don't need to vote on this, do we?
I don't know if we need to vote on this or not.
I thought the last one, we put it up for a motion and we-
We can do whatever someone-
Well, you can do whatever you want.
Whatever someone pleases.
Why don't you do a vote?
Okay, all right.
I motion to accept.
Move to accept. Seconded Frank. I know you're on the committee. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Andrew, you want to sign this while you're here?
I do. My only question, does it say tentative agreement, or does it just start with the, on the very front page at the top? It's my only question.
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. There's no tentative on there.
Sounds good. If you don't, we do have a brief statement. If I could just have a couple minutes.
Sure.
Thank you so much. As Les introduced me, I'm Andrew Wallace, president of Seacoast Education Association. I appreciate the chance to address the board tonight and under such great circumstances. Thank you very much for your work on behalf of students, staff, and everybody else in SAU 90. Seacoast Education would like to thank Superintendent Lois Costa, board members Les Shepherd and Frank DeLuca, business administrator Mariah Curtis, along with our CE negotiations team, Amy Murphy, Linda Libby, and Jackie McCoy, for the significant time and effort that everybody put into creating this memorandum of agreement. There were many sources of agreement and common ground from the start with the superintendent's plan for the return to school. We created the best possible document that provides guidance and protections that are reflective, as Ms. Costa said, of the changing landscape and potential challenges for staff in SAU 90 this year. We also found ways to be flexible with the goal of providing students an in-person learning experience and in a safe environment. As a community in SAU 90, we'll continue to face challenges during the ongoing pandemic. But I know that we can all accomplish everything that we set out to and that under those circumstances. We are continually impressed by the strength and resiliency of everyone who works so hard at SAU 90 schools. We especially appreciate getting to see it all in person this year. We're off to a great start, and we look forward to the continued success of our students this year. Thank you all for your time, and thank you for your efforts on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
And Amy, thank you.
Do, do parents know what would happen if their child is out? Parents, are they aware of how their child's education would continue in a remote fashion, let's say, for 10 days if they're out?
So I was told very clearly by our commissioner that there is no remote. So we, there will be no need to discuss that at this time. That came up last Thursday at the superintendent's conference from our commissioner. So if a child is out because they need to quarantine due to exposure to COVID or failure to pass the screener in the morning, the child would, the parent would probably call and let us know. And then from there, we would determine what would happen next. But at this time, there is no remote option available.
Question.
Frank?
In the past, forgetting COVID completely, if a child was out longer than a week, you know, because of the flu or something like that.
Yep.
In the past, teachers, instructors put together packets of work to be sent home to keep the child up to date. Is that not going to be adhered to?
Absolutely. That's going to always, that is always going to be the case. Any, any child who is out, I know, I know, I'm looking at the staff in front of me, I know they do everything they can to make sure the children stay current in their education, to make sure that they're caught up. We know that when they come back, we then need to work to fill what they missed, right? So absolutely, with any, with any absence, whether it is one day or it is five days, we do everything we can to ensure that we can cover, cover what was missed. And we do try to send work home as much as we can. So always, the teachers will do everything they can to ensure that learning continues and that we do everything we can so that they don't miss any more than they need to.
So that would be the fallback on not going remote, correct?
Correct.
What if the teacher is out with COVID for the 10 days? What happens at that point?
Just as it is with any other situation, if a staff member is absent. I know we have a new staff member who, who's out ill, you know, just a cold, a cold. It's not COVID. And we fill it with a substitute teacher. In fact, I had the pleasure of observing Mrs. Hughes today, teaching math. So we do what we can to fill those vacancies with the wonderful, talented staff that we have. And we could use some substitutes. So if anybody's listening, please, please, please get your application in. I'd be happy to interview you. I get to be the interviewer of the substitutes. And I'd be happy to sign anybody up. Are you available? Anybody available? Frank?
I would say, no, I did that once early in my career. And after throwing flowers out of a window, I figured that wasn't my gig. But Lois, what if worst case, we had to shut down a classroom?
Again, again, the commissioner is not recommending shutting down classrooms. He's very clear about it, that parents have the option for in-person learning. So if, let's say, there were multiple cases or clusters in a classroom, and the teacher was included in the cluster, we might then look, depending on how the teacher was feeling, we could look at potentially, again, we're not, it's not recommended. So you're kind of asking a question that it's not recommended. Those students that want to come to school that are not, that do not need to quarantine, we would have to find in-person learning for those students. In fact, it was a very interesting conversation. So the question is, is that what do you do with those students? And we, as superintendents, were talking about that. We're talking in very rare cases, very rare cases, you might need to put students in other classrooms. That's the kind of situations that we're talking about. Under the current guidance from the state, we do not have the authority to close classrooms down and go remote, as it stands today. Now, we know that could change, but that's where it's at today.
Are your school nurses reporting problems that parents are having getting COVID tests?
I am hearing, so that's a great question. I am hearing that it's taking longer than they want it to. So one of the things that we're talking about is what are the acceptable COVID tests that we could use for testing students? In fact, that was a conversation that the school nurses had today, just informally. And there are tests that are accepted that you can, believe it or not, purchase through a local pharmacy, these binax testing. And there's one other type that they can actually purchase. And they do, believe it or not, they, they are considered reliable and valid. So they are considered acceptable. Where you must have a PCR is when you've had exposure and you are asymptomatic. That is when you do need to have a PCR. So there's some delineations with these different types of COVID testing.
The other thing has, who screens the faculty in the morning?
The staff are required to self-screen before they step on campus, including visitors, substitutes, and anyone else who may be visiting the school.
Okay. What if I self-test, and I feel sick, but I know that you can't get a substitute? Is the responsibility on me not to come in? Totally on me not to come in?
You are responsible for yourself. If you fail the screener, do not set foot on our grounds.
Okay.
It's, go ahead.
The rapid test is not that accurate. And that was just confirmed today by an article, I believe, in the New York Times or the Washington Post. Basically, it's got a 60% accuracy.
Again, we're working with the Department of Health and Human Services for New Hampshire, and they are recommending certain types of tests, not all of them, but certain types of tests. Again, we are, we are working directly with the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. So if there are changes, we stay on top of it. I know that the nurses do attend the bi-weekly meetings that they have on Wednesdays. I know they're continuing to do that with Dr. Chan and Dr. Daly. So there, there's constant communication. So if there's a change, we would be made aware of it. They don't hesitate to call, or they'll call Cheryl Nielsen right at the DHHS. They don't hesitate to call.
Lois, I just had a quick question about absences. So two weeks is usually when the school starts becoming concerned, and in a regular year, non-COVID, unrelated, your kid's been out a total of two weeks through the year. So if you have a kid who has two colds in a year and has one 10-day COVID quarantine, what happens? Is there any kind of a, is there any kind of leeway for parents whose kids are out more than they should be? We can't do any kind of remote with them. How are we planning to manage that?
Yeah, again, it's, it goes back to the teacher, and the teacher ensuring that the student get, gets what he or she needs. So it's working with those individual students and determining what you send home, what you don't send home, and what you have to recover when they come back.
Yep.
And we're just, we are really just taking it one day at a time. I think that, you know, knock on wood, we've, with the procedures that we have in place, we've done fairly well. We've had, in the time we've been in, we've had, we've had about four cases, right? We know that we have students that are now participating in sports. We're very excited about that. We have Girls on the Run that's now taking place. So we are, again, we are, we're trying things this year with the idea that if we see numbers rising, we have the option of pulling back and doing something differently. But as we've said last year, we owe it to our students and the community to try. We are trying to bring back some normalcy, and we applaud, obviously, Mr. Dougherty's efforts and everyone's efforts who has been willing to step up to the plate to coach these wonderful opportunities for our students. We're looking to send students to the Brown Center at Hampton Academy. I know that Mr. Sadler and Mrs. Hoppa have talked about sending students to Sandy Point. We are trying to bring back normalcy, and we will continue to try so long as we don't see transmission, transmission happening in the schools. And so far, we have not. But we, again, this is first full weekend. But we, again, this is first full weekend.
Back to you, Lois.
Okay. So just a couple of things on my board report. As you know, we continue to partner with Hampton Police, Fire, and Rescue, the Town Manager, PTA, Chamber of Commerce, CE, SESPA, SEU21, and superintendents around the state to ensure that we are in line with what's happening and to ensure that we're doing all we can for our Hampton students. Our school nurses, they continue to participate in those state-level conversations. We know it's a dynamic situation, which requires our continued attention and vigilance as guidance continues to change. You know that I will continue to keep you informed in my weekly Friday newsletters. Just to let you know that we're looking forward to the Safety and Security Task Force with police and fire chiefs, chiefs around the seacoast. We will be meeting with them on Tuesday, November 30th, and again on March 22nd. SEU21 will host the November meeting, and we will host the March 22nd meeting. Excited about that. Just to remind you that September 22nd is an in-service day. It's also when we're going to be doing our suicide prevention training that is required of all schools in the state of New Hampshire as a result of a new law. We also are looking forward to our continued work with Mike Anderson on September 30th. And I think that's pretty much it for my report as it stands, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Is Schools Out in the school, or didn't they not find enough staff?
Unfortunately, they do not have the staff. You know, I don't know, Mr. Sadler, if you or Mrs. Hoppa have any updated information, but I know that last time, Mr. Lassard and I spoke with YMCA Schools Out, they were really struggling to fill the positions. So it's really a challenge. In fact, on a, on a very somber note, I know that First Student is struggling as well. In fact, you may know that unfortunately, the buses were delayed today. There was a sudden passing of one of our beloved bus drivers. So we are all just trying to work through these things as we, as we can. So this challenge is that I've been in contact with Stacy Morse about and working through these things.
Okay.
I keep hearing that President Biden's gonna make affordable childcare and free K, I mean pre-K for all. And I'm wondering if you have heard anything about that, Lois? No?
I have not.
I can give you some information on that. That is part of the 3.5 trillion-dollar package, which is on hold.
They can't hear you? Frank, they can't hear you?
Oh, that's part of the 3.5 interstructure package that is on hold. There's two bills.
Okay.
1.9 and the 3.5. They're supposed to go in tandem. The 3.5 is childcare and school learning and affordable junior colleges, et cetera. That's on hold.
Okay.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay.
Just a thank you to the parents for their feedback on the ESER funds. That was also in my Friday newsletter. We did hear from some of those families, so we appreciate the feedback. So, thank you.
Okay. Under new business here, it says, "Feedback for the E-S-S-E-R funds."
We are required, because under these federal funds, to receive feedback from our families regarding how they would like to spend those ESER funds. So that was in my newsletter last Friday, and we have heard from a few parents. They understand that there was a problem with the link this past week, two weeks ago it worked, and this week, there was some problems. But please feel free to send any, any feedback to me at my email, elcosta@saun90.org. I'm always willing to hear what parents have to say regarding these ESER funds. In fact, the tents were a result of parents coming to us and saying, "Would we consider putting some tents up to see if those would be helpful in giving students another opportunity for outdoor space?" So, and Mr. Lassard was able to secure those, and we were able to put them up pretty swiftly. So that was great.
Okay. Also, under new business, it says, "Update for COVID-19." I think you've done that. You've already talked about that. And the last one under new business is vaccines. I didn't put that on the agenda.
I had it put on the agenda.
Okay. Frank?
And my question regarding vaccines is going back to us receiving federal funds, and per the direction of the executive order, they're looking at mandating vaccines or opting out and testing on a weekly basis. So my question is, which direction are we following? Can we, A, mandate vaccines in order for us to have the kids stay in a safe environment, or weekly testing as an opt-out? And if so, which direction will we be approaching? Because I do know that you were looking, the state has some type of program for testing. Is that not correct? I thought you were bringing forward something about testing.
So we have the opportunity as part of our MOA, and in collaboration with the Department of Health and Human Services, we have the option, and we are doing this, to do testing of asymptomatic staff members. So it would be, it's an offering. It's not, it's not required. It's just an option for staff members who would like to have the option to do testing. We partner with Convenient MD, as is SEU21, and many districts around the state where we will set this up, where staff can go in and they can be tested every other week to ensure that, you know, we're, we're doing our part to keep everyone safe. So that's, that's only a piece of it.
Okay. But according to, I guess, the legislation, is basically if we are accepting federal funds, is that correct, especially for special ed? Do we get fund, funding from the federal government on special ed or any other programs?
We get Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV funds, which are all federal-funded programs.
So how do we address the mandate for vaccines and/or by September 27th, if I remember correctly, and/or testing?
So this, again, came up last Friday at the superintendent's conference in Concord, and the commissioner had an opportunity to address this. And he does not feel that it pertains to schools. So with that being said, we know that particularly our age population, where we have many students that are not eligible for vaccinations, that we would, we would strongly encourage everyone to become vaccinated. We are very fortunate that, if you look at what NEA says, 90% of educators around the state are vaccinated. So I think that we have a great percentage of our professional staff that are doing their part in terms of getting vaccinated. We also know that there are people for medical reasons and for religious reasons that would probably not be able to get the vaccine. So you do have those that also enter into the picture. So with that said, I actually had an opportunity to speak with our school nurses about that, because, you know, I do meet with them fairly regularly. And their understanding is that although it's been encouraged that educators get the vaccines, it has not been mandated. And that we, we know that many of our district staff has been vaccinated, and we're grateful for that, and we continue to encourage those staff members to do that. But we also know that multiple studies have demonstrated that COVID-19 cases identified in school and childcare settings reflect community transmission. They do not drive community transmission. So kids are fairly safe in school. I mean, we saw that last, last year. The children were in school, we were not vaccinated, and we did not see high levels of transmission, which was really encouraging to see. So, and, and the other thing is, is that we also know that there are many mitigating factors which slow the spread. And so with that being said, I think we're taking on many of those mitigating factors. I think that we have a mask, we've, we've looked at masks, and we know when we're in the red zone, that masks are required. We know that when we're in the green zone, they're optional. When, when they're in the yellow zone, we recommend it. We also are trying to keep our students six feet apart when they're eating lunch and their masks are off. We also are trying to keep students three to six feet apart to the greatest extent possible to allow for those social distancing. We're also doing mask breaks. We're also doing hand washing and sanitization. So we are doing a number of those mitigating factors so that we can ensure everyone's safety. So I guess that's, that's where we are. And I know that, that's, that's really where it is.
So when you say that it's, it's not mandated, because it is approved by the CDC, that means smallpox, polio, if somebody opposes those vaccines, then they can opt out of those vaccines?
There, there are medical exemptions, and religious exemptions, yes. That's true.
Okay.
Yep. We certainly want to encourage our staff members to, right?
Just clarifying, just want to clarify.
What percentage of our staff faculty has been vaccinated?
Again, that's, that's under really FERPA and HIPAA laws, that I am really not required, I can't, I cannot ask that. I can tell you that we have, again, according to NEA New Hampshire, 90% of our educators are vaccinated. And I would guess we're at least 90%. That's my best guess.
Okay. What percentage are non-faculty in New Hampshire vaccinated?
I don't have that number.
Okay.
I would guess it's a bit lower.
Well, Hampton has 60% vaccination rate. So if you look, if you look at, and this is all on a website, so I'm not, I'm speaking just factually right now. So if you look at the website, which is under, it's the map that shows all of our counties, you can get the vaccination rates for our counties, and then you can drill down and get it by town. And so our town is at 60%, a little over 60%.
You can find that at MUR. If you scroll down, it has that information off of the New Hampshire website.
Under HIPAA and FERPA laws, then a teacher does not know who is vaccinated in her class or his class?
That, you mean students?
Students, right.
Right. And keep in mind, we only have students that are 12 and up, so you're really talking middle school students at most.
Right. But they would have no access to that.
That's right. Anyone under 11 and under would, does not have access.
And they would not have access if the child was vaccinated for smallpox, measles, mumps, Ebola, and that stuff?
So when, when students come to school, they are, they typically would meet with the nurse, and they would, you can ask the questions, and they, there is, you could ask them, they don't have to tell you. That's how, that's how I understand it.
You'd be, the nurse would be able to tell on the physical form, but other than that?
That's right. Correct.
Any further discussion? Okay. Moving on. Mariah, financials?
Hello.
Mic on.
My mic, is my mic on? They're quiet today.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I want to start with, I have a new employee, too, to the group. It's Donna Bebo. She started two weeks ago, and very excited to be able to teach her and get her started into the office again, to relieve me some, some payroll and accounting issues. I will be meeting with the budget committee next week at 7:00, and we'll be going over the financial summary of 2021. I am going to also do that tonight with everybody here, just so that you have that. I'm going to start with our 2021 operating budget originally was $23,789,112. That budget was completely spent. With that said, we are returning a fund balance to offset taxes of $1,194,071. That money is all anticipated revenues. It is not the budget. It's all anticipated revenues. So that breaks down to, quick explanation. Right now, the DOE 25 is due, which is showing what I'm returning for fund balance. After that's done, I would do a estimated revenue that goes with that, that sets your taxes. I have to guess for the year what we're going to get for revenue. So these unanticipated revenues, last year at this time, I didn't anticipate. So it's all revenue we got through the year, and I'm giving it back. So part of that anticipated revenue was the close of the capital project. The academy project is completely finished, and the auditors finished the project, and we will be giving back in revenues of $405,183 in the building project. That is interest. We have to return that. We will be returning Medicaid. We did not budget Medicaid, because at one point, Medicaid was not expected to give you any money back for, for services. But I have an amazing special ed secretary, and she really, she is amazing at what she does. And we got $84,456 in Medicaid that we did not anticipate. Also, our special ed secretary, who is amazing, once again, Kim Bryant.
Who knows to Christine Sullivan?
Christine Sullivan and Kim Bryant, they're amazing. I love them.
Good job, ladies.
We received CAT-Aid money. That's out of district services, and you have to, it's reporting, and reporting, and reporting, and they were on top of it. We anticipated some money, but not what we got. So for our CAT-Aid, we received access of $174,005. We also received an LGC return surplus funds from Health Trust. They get audited and have so much money that they return back. And we received some of that funds this year of $94,971. And then we also, this year, which we didn't anticipate until after I did my revenues, we asked for a little extra cable franchise funds. So we got $75,000 in cable franchise funds that we weren't expecting. And then the last thing that we got, that we will be returning is auditors found prior year unreturned fund balances. So every time the, they were audited, it would get rolled over, rolled over, and I wanted to clean up the whole year, and I'm returning that unreturned fund balance of So it is all unanticipated revenues. Again, our budget was completely spent, and then some. We, we spent $252,805 that we received in COVID-19 money on top of our budget. And we received $663,702 in federal funds that we spent all of last year. So thank you so much to the, filling out your forms for Title I, Title II money, free and reduced. It helps a lot. And everybody that really put effort into helping me get money from the CARES Act and doing the reports to get a little extra funds, it all helped. So it's, it was an unexpected little gift back to the town.
Mariah, why are we giving back the $75,000 to the cable committee for the franchise fees?
That was my question.
Because it wasn't expected. We, we, it was just money that we got, and we didn't, we didn't spend it, or it was spent, but it wasn't attached to that. We spent the whole budget and just had that extra left. We spent the whole budget and just had that extra left over.
But my question is, I know we're approaching the selectmen for approximately 134, 125 thousand to improve
Yes, 100%.
the communication facilities. And yet the 75 would greatly offset that.
So what this does is when, this is what the auditor breakdown was. So what they saw was my, so we had revenues and revenues that I anticipated. These are revenues that I didn't anticipate. So that 75 could have been another revenue that we received, but they posted it as unanticipated revenues that I'm giving back.
So they said that should be returned and then this year ask for 135?
This revenue technically could be labeled as a different revenue, but they, the auditors wanted to label it as the cable, access cable because I didn't anticipate it. So we received other revenues, but to go through all the checks and whatever, it was easier to say that we're giving 75 back because that was unanticipated.
Medicaid funds, I thought that was supposed to go back to the state, not the town. No, goes back to the town.
Because we spent the money. Medicaid, we spend, we spend it on services and then we get a percentage back from the services that we spend.
And you can't carry it over? That's the other piece of it? So you've got to kind of close it out?
Once the year is done, it's done.
Yeah. You can't carry it over.
And technically, I could not spend more than my budget lines.
And I would say when you present to the selectmen and ask them for the cable, I would make sure that we tell them that we returned 75. So really, we're just asking for 65, so. I would do that. I would do that because.
Or I just label it different and I can change it from the town.
But anything you present now to the budget committee, you're going to say, oh, okay, we're asking for this, but remember that we gave you. That's right. Every single time for each one of these items, they need to be reminded of how much we have given back.
Exactly.
Well, and this is not a normal year. Just remember that too. This is, we did spend our whole budget. I think that's the hardest thing to, I have to keep saying that. We spent our whole budget. Unexpected revenue and then some. So it's not your normal, normally you would not get this much money back.
Is the federal government giving more money to school districts, do you know of?
There was a percentage in, we do not receive the funds actually that they gave the percentage to. It's Hampton is not allowed a certain percentage. I can't remember what fund off the top of my head now that you're asking. But we don't receive the fund and they did give like 10 or 20%
Okay.
extra to towns, but we don't receive it anyway. So we didn't get anything extra.
And why is that?
Because we're considered a rich town.
Right. Yeah, it's a donor town.
It's a donor town.
Donor receiver town.
So we don't get that percentage.
Yep.
But we have current ESSR money, right?
We have current ESSR money, yes.
So we did get money this year.
But there is, I know for childcare centers, they also gave more money this year that we applied for and got. So I didn't know if they'd offer it to schools as well. No, not to us.
Does anybody have more questions from Mariah? I have a question for you.
Yes.
In the packet, there's a bus contract. Have you started negotiations with them?
So we, I talked to them. We actually, the last contract that was signed, that was by Nathan Loney. We had a three-year plus two. So we technically don't have to negotiate with them again. I was right now looking at what the plus two consisted of because I did not know that. I just assumed we had a three-year. So when I contacted Stacy, and I have his name right here because I actually, what is his? David Fairweather, he sent me the plus two agreement. So I'm looking at that right now to see if we just stay with the plus two years or if we actually renegotiate.
Okay. Let us know.
Yeah.
Any other questions from Mariah? Frank?
Speaking of the bus issue, and I understand they're having difficulties with drivers as well as every other school district. And I know in some states, the National Guard has come in to drive buses.
Massachusetts.
Where are we regarding, I mean, are they looking for a higher increase if we start to negotiate? Or can we hold them to the two years that you mentioned?
We can hold them to the two years. I just don't know what the percentage was. So I don't know if it's worth me negotiating with them and not holding them to the two years. So I need to pull that and look at that.
You'll check into that.
But I will check in that. I also, yes. I've been researching it and seeing what other districts have been doing, so.
All right. Having said that, let me go to Dr. Costa and say, are we experiencing difficulties in obtaining bus services to transport these kids to the school systems?
No, they've been able to cover it. It's just been challenging.
And they're constantly looking for drivers, but I think it's a 60 or 90-day window. Once they get somebody who wants to drive, they've got to train them and.
Yeah, they have a three-week training.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff to go through it.
Well, I do know now that a lot of kids are riding their bikes to school. You know, and I'm looking at winter, when that can't be achieved, how are we going to get these kids to school if we're having difficulties with the bus system?
Well, let's just hope they get trained before then. It's a good thing it's, they're riding their bikes now. And I mean, we just have to wait and see how it goes. I mean, fortunately, knock on wood, we have not, they have not come to us about saying they've had to cancel routes or that they've had issues. They've been able to do it, but I know they're stretched really thin. So when you lose a driver unexpectedly, it really has an impact. I mean, you've got everybody out on the road right now. You call and they're just not available because they're all out on the road driving buses.
And they're paying $21 an hour to drive the bus.
Yep.
And sign-on bonuses. Dave, just while I'm thinking of it, you may want to talk to Keith about seeing if you can get an additional bike rack out there. That bike rack, I go by it every day. It's just overflowing.
Right.
Been beautiful weather.
Yeah.
And Frank, it was the Edicacy Act grant that we don't receive. That's the one that they've been giving a big percentage to.
Any other questions from Mariah? Okay. Moving on, personnel. PE position at Marston? Public or non-public?
Probably non-public. It's just an update. I think we're gonna, it's going to stay as it is.
Okay.
We're going to stay at status quo when I can.
So we'll talk about that in non-public. Policy review. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 that are second read. I'm suggesting that we take one of them, GDF out for the time being. GDF, it's Hiring of Non-Certified Personnel. And I'm fine with going ahead with the other 1, 2, 3, 4.
I'll make a motion that we approve all of them in one shot.
Okay.
With the exception of GDF.
That's kind of what I said. All right?
Yep.
Okay? All right. So we would approve all of them with the exception of GDF. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have one discussion on service animals. I know this is very bizarre.
Which is IMGA.
So it's basically referring to the dog, the service dogs.
More than likely.
But if someone, I think we talked about this before, but I guess I don't remember.
We had one with a service rabbit.
But if you had someone that had an animal that they needed, what do you call it?
Comfort animal?
Yes.
Emotionally support.
Emotional support. Could that, is that covered under service animals?
I don't believe it is.
I think you have to.
I don't think so either.
Emotional support is not covered. It is different.
It is different. And there's now new laws around that and regulations. I know they've really cracked down on it.
Yes, there are federal laws now. Because we have.
So there are federal laws that cover that and we don't have to.
In the library, you can bring a service animal in, but you cannot bring in a comfort animal. That's right.
Yes. So I can't bring my ball python into your library.
You cannot. Or what else did we have? We had a parrot. Someone brought their comfort parrot to the library.
There you go. Okay, as long as it's covered somewhere, but you're telling me it's covered by federal law.
Okay. Yep.
Done.
Further discussion? Okay, so we have 1, 2, 3, 4 policies that we're going to move forward. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay. So we have now 1 GDF. And I've got to find it here, I'm sorry.
Page 48, 47?
47, yeah.
Okay. On page, on page 47, we have the, the new, for lack of a better, the new language. On the flip side, we have the old language. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm not particularly concerned myself about the training and the probationary period and so on and so forth. I'm a little concerned, and I don't have an answer for you guys that work on this. I don't have an answer to it. But we are moving from, the superintendent has the authority to hire non-certified employees subject to approval of the board. The new language takes approval of the school board out. And I know Lois and I have talked about this. Approval of the school board makes, would make this cumbersome. Okay, because we approve teachers and we know that's kind of cumbersome. She has to nominate and then we approve. We have not been doing that. We have not been following our own policy, at least since I've been on the board, about non-certified personnel. They have not come before the board and been approved. So.
Again, because it's been cumbersome.
Okay.
So many.
Right. So we have two things here. One, we haven't been following our own policy. And number two, we're going to get rid of.
The policy. Because we haven't been following it. No.
Policy. I.
I think what you're looking for is that, and we discussed this when we had our policy meeting. I think what you're looking for is that the board could give input. But you can tell me more.
I am fine to keep the policy as it previously was. I'm fine either way. What, where it gets tricky, I'll give you an example. So we had a very recent resignation just last week and we want to fill that position as quickly as possible. Well, the issue becomes that we obviously aren't ready tonight, but we get to wait, do we wait now until October till we fill it? There's where it gets tricky. But I'm, I'm willing to do whatever you prefer to do.
Yeah, but to clarify that, back in, I believe, August, we did give.
Over the summer, you give it to me.
Over the summer, we wavered that. And that basically went until we had to revisit it. So that was an open policy to prevent those issues of not filling a position, you know, by waiting for the board. So I don't see where that's cumbersome.
I'm okay with that.
You know, the other positions, I don't think we need to deal with custodial and secretaries in that framework.
I guess I'm just looking at it is, one of the big jobs that the board has, other than budget, is approving staff. Okay? And even though we haven't been doing it, that's, that is in this policy. And I hate for us to give up that. Again, I don't, I don't know how we can make it less cumbersome, but I would be willing to table this and work on it some more. I don't know if we can come up with anything else, but if we have a month or so to see if we can come up with something, I would prefer to do that rather than to approve it tonight.
All right. Can we get a definition of what you mean by staff?
Teaching staff?
No, that I understand.
This is non-certified staff.
So anybody who's not a teacher?
Everyone.
So it's anyone who's not a teacher. So you're talking custodians, food service, paras, secretaries, anyone.
But realistically, there's no teeth to it, right? If we give it up over the summer and that's really when the majority of the hiring happens. So how many would we normally approve in the course of the school year? You know, how many of those, how many positions like that do we usually hire during the course of school? A few.
How many did you hire?
A lot. It was last revised in 2010.
Yeah, there can be a lot.
Okay, so after, after school starts.
And look at, you know, Mrs. Borg, we're trying to fill her staff right now, you know. I'll do whatever you'd like. I can, just tell me.
I think it has to do with some sort of a check.
Check and balance.
I agree. I'm going with that.
I would just like a line that maybe has something to do with input, any input that the board may deem necessary.
How about if we tabled this?
All right. Okay.
Less says.
Are you guys going to have more, more policy meetings?
We're meeting, yeah, I mean, we meet once a month usually.
We have.
We'll leave this on you.
Thanks.
We have the nurses' policies that we're going to be looking at next. Again, there's a number of policies that landed on our, landed with us just at the beginning of the year. I'm having the nurses review policies right now. That'll be for next month, but we can, maybe we come up with a date for us to sit down and we'll put some of the language from the former policy to give this policy some more subsidence.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion then to table policy GDF?
I'll make the motion to table.
Moved, Frank. Seconded, Wendy. Discussion, all those in favor?
Well, I have one discussion point.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So if Mr. Shepherd, Mr. DeLuca and Mrs. Riddle think that, or you have ideas, you should let us know because we have discussed this.
Okay.
And so I think we need, it's the wording. It's the wording that we need a little bit of help with because we have gone around on this. And so your input would be gladly.
I would think you should talk to Mr. Shepherd because he seems to have the most opinion.
I would just say.
And a language arts teacher.
I would just say that in front of us, we have the old and we have the new. I would prefer the old, not, I'm not saying that we can't go to something else. But anyhow, I would support tabling this at this time.
Sometime when you're talking to Mrs. Shepherd, you could probably give her your opinion about this.
If you have the opportunity to meet at some point.
I would. I would if I was listened to.
How the meeting started.
All right, we have a motion on the table in a second. All those in favor of tabling this? Okay.
While we're on policies, can I ask, where are we with the stipend policy?
So again, we discussed that and we looked, I brought forward some policy descriptions from some other places. There weren't many though. There are not many places that have policies regarding stipends. So in our discussion, we thought, and correct me if I'm wrong when I'm saying this, but what I thought I heard was that this, a policy is not necessarily needed because it should be covered under the.
CBA. Collective bargaining.
Yes, CBA.
It is.
But I'm, I guess what we, what Frank and I were a little bit concerned about is, is it comprehensive enough?
Would you have to go back to renegotiate?
Well, there's supposed to be a committee, right? And there is no, so the CBA, or the one that we have that most recently called for. And there is no, so the CBA, or the one that we have that most recently called for a committee, which we don't know if that's currently happening.
Right, and I had asked for a description, a job description, and we have this in our packet.
Yeah.
For each one of those.
Yep.
The idea of weeks, hours, days, length of season, so on and so forth. And I had kind of asked for that as we were preparing for negotiations.
Right. And what I was, and when we were
I want, so I don't see those, those descriptions.
They're not, they're not there because if you remember back in May 14, 2018, when you met with, it was under Nathan Lunny at the time, that was not, you didn't come up with that. It was really pretty slim. So I guess if we wanted to do that, I think we would have to go back to the group and
Negotiations.
Yeah, I do think that.
I just wanted to give you the list and what they were because I'm going to start you doing some contracts for the
Oh, Amy, Amy has something to add.
Amy, come to the microphone, please. Good evening.
Hi, how's everybody doing?
There you go.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
So just to be clear, you're looking for some clarity on the stipend positions?
Yes.
Okay, so what has happened historically is that we might have a meeting over the course of the year and we determine where those funds are going. Because there may be something where an activity is no longer being done and where we will reassign those funds somewhere else. As you know, in the past, we've talked about adding more to that because we've been having a lot, many more activities. And just, we haven't added to that probably since the time when you were negotiating a contract 30 years ago, 20 years ago.
Couple of years.
Yes, so we typically do have a meeting. We didn't have a meeting last year, and I don't believe we had one the year before. But prior to that, Nathan and I would sign off on that stipend and, the stipend list. That's kind of what we did. Probably six or seven years ago, maybe even more than that, we had a committee where there were representatives from all of the schools and Pepper was at that meeting as well. And we had talked about all of the different positions that we might need going forward. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. It's probably something that we could do with our negotiation team to have a committee assigned as part of that.
And would you come up with the job descriptions too, Amy? Because I think that's really what we're looking for.
We absolutely can.
Great.
I think Lois knows this, Ginny probably knows it, Frank, and I know you know this. Typically, this gets put off
Yes.
to the end. And everybody's tired and beat, we're under the gun, and people just lop a percentage onto it. And so things are out of whack, I could guarantee that.
Right, well, we would appreciate the opportunity to look at it, revamp it. It really hasn't been in quite some time.
Okay.
So we look forward to working with you guys through our negotiations with that.
Okay, that was my question.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate the time.
Amy, one other reference to this. My concern is, and I've had a few calls from people that are teachers. You know, sometimes they don't know about these positions being posted. And some, and some of these positions are filled by non-teachers that you negotiated the contract for. Yet somebody else entirely who's not a teacher is doing the job, you know? And it's kind of, I guess from my perspective, why are we negotiating it and putting it in the contract if somebody that's not a certified teacher is not, you know, not doing the job?
Right, I think that's probably something that's more at Hampton Academy because they really get the bulk of it. Any of the positions that would be a stipend position, say at Center or Marston School, for example, would be a certified teacher. For example, the, the music teachers are the ones who handle those programs. Some of our technology teacher, Mr. Dutton and Mrs. Levine, would be handling some of those at, at Marston and Center. As far as Hampton Academy is concerned, I know that things are put out to teachers first. But unfortunately, we don't always have people who are available or who have the time or the interest in doing it. At that point, we put that out to other people. I think that it probably would be the sports positions that are probably most like that. Jim Dougherty, I know he was here for a long time, unfortunately he's not. But I can certainly reach out to Jim and talk to him about it. And we can, he might be able to answer that question better than I can.
Well, I'm just looking at, you know, if you had a teacher, say at Center or Marston that was interested in it, then they should have a crack at it.
Yes, unfortunately, the problem is that they got out of school before we do, so it makes it very difficult for us. I know that in the past, that I've been interested in possibly doing the volleyball with Sean Tierney. But I can't because I don't get out of school until 3:20.
Well, what I, what I look at is, I understand the sports end of it, but you know, you have the spelling bee, National Geographic bee, Student Council, you know, those are what I'm looking
Right, so those would be typically done by a certified staff. There are times when we have some of our support staff doing that. And we're very, very fortunate to have support staff who are so dedicated and devoted to using their time for very, very little money. So, you know, I know some of the Student Council positions and I think that we should just be really grateful to our CESPAS staff who's willing to go over and above when they get so little as it is and they do so much.
Okay, I'm sure
And I will, I will speak to Jim.
I'm sure we'll talk about it more.
Sounds great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, moving forward, we have to look at the minutes of August 10th. Public and non-public. Do the public first, motion? Moved Frank, seconded Wendy. Discussion? All those in favor? Non-public, motion, Ginny?
Yes.
Second, Andrea? Discussion? All those in favor?
Another outstanding job, Mariah.
I know, it's so much time.
Okay, so we need to go into non-public under RSA 91A, number 3, Roman numeral 2, parentheses A. Roll call?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Okay, bye, Amy. First thing that we have is to accept Mr. Lynn Paris's letter of resignation.
I move that we accept Mr. Lynn Paris's resignation with regret.
Second?
Second.
Seconded Wendy. Discussion? All those in favor? Okay. We have to accept We have to accept the resignation of Rita Rowley. Motion? Frank? Second? Ginny? Discussion?
Well, I think we say with regret.
Absolutely, yes.
With regret, friendly amendment? Discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and we have to approve a transfer of Amy Hansen, para to the school secretary position at Hampton Academy.
I'll make a motion on that, however, I would like to say that we post the room
Zor one, post the zor one.
Yeah, that has to be posted, that we can't have a double.
Okay, seconded?
Yeah.
Ginny? Discussion? All those in favor? Hey, I don't think there's any other business to come before the board.
I just, I'm sorry, I hate to do this, but there's contracted services. Isn't a contractor contracted services?
Yeah, shouldn't that come in front of the board?
No, 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 I'm just trying to get a clarification. Like if I'm looking for the contractors that work
Keys, facilities should have contracts, contractors.
Isn't that the same as contracted services?
I'm sorry, what did you say? We were talking about contracted services dealing with special education.
And you contract with an individual?
Shouldn't they come in front of the board?
Someone, when we put out a bid or an RFP for doing the lawn service or wherever, and they accept that bid, then they become a contracted service, correct?
Right.
Correct, Mariah? Okay, so is that, is that what you
I was just trying to find sort of all contracted services, not just special ed. Because I was looking at the comparison of how much the prices have gone up, but
Shouldn't those come in front of the board though for final approval?
Yes.
They're dealing with money in the bottom line of our budget.
Depends on that policy that we were just talking about.
Okay, so we need, all right.
We need to look at that.
They kind of mesh together.
They got to mesh. Because if we're, if somebody's contract goes up 50%, that's going to impact the bottom line on yours by 50%. So where we're finding the money.
And they're not, that's not the same policy?
We're in a free-for-all here and I thought we had a motion to adjourn.
We did, didn't we?
Oh, we did?
Okay, did we?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second.
I make a motion to have a martini.
Discussion?
Who was making that?
We're in public, Frank. All those in favor?
At the Cape.
Okay, we are adjourned till October
14?
12.